Okay, good morning. We are here a couple of minutes late, Tuesday the 6th of June.
Good morning Chairman and Commission. Today we have two topics for workshop. One is the Odyssey update, the Odyssey software update. When we presented this during the budget discussions, the Commission asked for about a thirty, every thirty days an update until go-live in August. So today is the thirty-day mark on that. So Greg Gann will get up and kind of overview, but the DA is here and other players are in the room that could be impacted by Odyssey. And then the second thing on the agenda is to, as we're continuing to formulate the recommended budget for the Commission, we want to drill into the election budget just a bit. So Lindsay has a couple of options to look at the Election Commissioner's decision packages, and Laura and Christian are both here to answer questions on that. So we'll start with Greg. We'll talk about Odyssey and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you. Good morning Greg, welcome to the update. Appreciate it.
Good morning Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Last time I came and reported on Odyssey, we've done a lot of good work. We continue to do that work. The timeline has not changed. It's still August 7th. That is, by my estimation, probably forty-five days of real, honest, hard work that has to occur. We continue to meet at least twice a week in person as a large group with OJA, DC-18, and all the various stakeholders. Those meetings are productive and they continue on. We have dialogue outside of those meetings. There's work on interfaces every day. Where we are right now, we feel that hearings, results, and warrants for the DA, we are optimistic that we'll get that fixed and have it working by August 7th. There's still seven other key areas that are not ready and we're doing our best effort to make sure that that works. It is a partnership, hand in glove with OJA to make that happen. We're applying as many resources as we can to achieve this. There are Justware issues, that is the case management system for the District Attorney's Office. We have support to a point. We're looking at an addendum to add additional capacity to this in relationship to Odyssey interfaces. I hope to have an idea of what that would cost by the end of the week. We feel that that's critical in our movement forward. We are at a crossroads. We're trying to figure out exactly what it's going to take and what it's going to look like on August 7th. Part of the compounding problem on this is, is that the OJA plan, whenever they roll out Odyssey, is they shut off the existing system a week in advance. That means they go to paper. And that means for everything. And for a community of our size, that has a staggering scope. So we need a clear and thoughtful plan on how to do business from the District Attorney's standpoint, from the Sheriff's Office standpoint, and Wichita Police Department, and also Department of Corrections. All of those people, we need to be in lockstep and have a thoughtful plan in how we're going to survive this changeover. We have asked for more time. We've been flatly told no. And I do have my colleagues from the District Attorney's Office, from the Sheriff's Office and the Department of Corrections here, and they can further explain from their viewpoint. And I will tell you that from an IT standpoint, I will clear the deck for all of my developers, all ten of them, and they'll work full-time on this until we resolve this problem. I do need to share with the organization that that means, if I clear their deck, that means work we're doing right now for all the other county departments and services will come to a stop until Odyssey goes live and probably a few weeks afterward if need be. So I'm committed to make this happen with everything I've got. I know I have your support, but this is a very tall mountain to climb. And with that, I will stand for questions.
So a week of, they're going to close down our service? You have to close our service for seven days or a week?
That includes protection orders, things like that. It'll all go to a paper process.
So what's our challenge for staffing to do that?
Mike, Mark, if you're back there, you might want to come up and just talk from the DA's perspective.
Just trying to figure out what we as the Commission need to help support you all on to get through that week. And that's assuming when you turn it on after seven days, it's all perfect, huh?
So the, yes, because the first order of business is paper filing of things. This goes back to the way we did things in early stages of my career where you'd walk up and hand the clerk something. That can all be done and filings can take place and deadlines can be met with respect to calendars and calendared dockets. It's not ideal, but you know, worked that way for time immemorial until the last fifteen, twenty years. The larger issue though is stuff that happens overnight. If I'm a cop who arrives at a scene and I don't know, is there an active protection from abuse order? Is there not? Are you supposed to be here or does a judge said you, she gets the house and you're not supposed to be here? As it happens today, police officer, Sheriff's Department officer, Derby cop, anybody in the county arrives, they'll get a hold of what we commonly refer to a spider who then relays, who has access to the database run by the county, run by the, I should say that again, run by the court system, full court, and they can access that information. And so at, you know, nothing, most bad things happen after five, before seven o'clock the next morning. And so how is that going to work for that week or whatever it turns out to be? That is an unknown, that is yet to be adequately addressed in my mind. You, unless I misunderstand the framework of the county, the clerks who would enter this information and deal with this are not your employees. They work for the state and I, so I don't think you have the authority to demand a third shift, for instance, to have someone answer the phone all night long. So the path forward to handle that for that week is less than clear. And so that's another thing we're working on to ensure that we don't have a breakdown in that sort of thing overnight for a week or ten days or whatever it turns out to be. Back to the, keeping the lights on here, I think the one thing that has, you know, give the silver lining, the thing that was the most concerning to me was we've accessed information through this new system through a portal, and that's moving along. But the interface between the Odyssey system and my existing records management or case management system was the biggest concern because we are so, we have so committed over time to automation and to interaction between the state's courts, state courts, records management system, and our own case management system. We have had these interfaces and I guess I should say parenthetically, apparently we are far more reliant upon interfaces than any other jurisdiction in the state because we have so bought into this over the last twenty years. And it has increased our efficiencies. As big as my office is, it would be exponentially bigger and you'd have exponentially more FTEs if we didn't, if we had not done these things, so. But the one that was the most concerning to me was those hearings and then results of those hearings being entered and having that interface. In the last, I don't know, John, ten days, two weeks, we have been, we have received enough assurances that that mechanism seems to be on a path towards success. And if that happens, the sky is falling sort of scenario, I think, is abated to some extent. There will be still, inevitably, a great deal of data entry that is not taking place now, but if it's just entering the names of attorneys who've entered their appearance, if it's just entering other types of information, you know, a few, yeah, a few thousand things a year, that's inconvenient but doable. The hearings, we're talking tens of thousands. I mean, forty, fifty thousand hearings a year, forty, fifty thousand results of those, that's, that would be crushing. So as long as that works, the first major threshold concern that I had is, I'm at least cautiously optimistic in that regard. So I'm getting a little off-topic from the question you've originally posed, but I want to give you a, you know, an overview of where we, where we think we are.
Okay, thank you.
So if you're concerned about attorney's names being entered, is that just at the beginning of this goes live or do you think that that's something that's going to be built in as time goes on or?
Yeah, it won't happen. There is no path forward right now for it to happen. It needs to happen and over, and over time, we'll have to make it work, but I don't have a timeline for when that'll go. But that's something we can limp along with for a period of time until it does, we do get it corrected. Whether that's corrected from, just to clarify, my current case management system is called Justware. We're moving to a new case management system. We actually had our second, second of three demonstrations, thank you, yesterday, resolved this next month. Whether that question you just asked will be resolved with our existing record case management system or when we get to the new one, I don't know. I mean, at some point, we're going to quit throwing, you know, effort after one that we're about to, you know, mothball and put all our effort into the new one. But at some point, that'll have to be done. I don't want to do this forever, entering, you know, manual entry things, but we can limp along for a while with that.
Thank you Chairman, thanks Mark. Greg, on the go-live August 7th date, we're talking about deadlines, launch dates, this drop-dead seven to ten days period, that happens whether we do this August 7th or ninety days after that, correct?
Correct.
Do you have any heartburn that we need more time to prep for that seven-day drop-dead? That we won't be prepared? What, the example that DA Bennett shared about what happens overnight is relatively concerning. I mean, do you have enough time to prepare a makeshift system to make sure that we're?
We'll have to. I don't, I don't have any other choice. We have to give this every effort and then some. There isn't another option for us. So we're doing everything we can to be as prepared when that day comes. So I mean, there isn't anything more important. If you said, what do I need? I'll say more time, every time. More time gives me the comfort of knowing we can do this. And we can, we can do this. Given enough time, we can solve all of these problems. But I'm given a very short timeframe to make this happen and I have a tremendous number of people that are committed to making this a success. We just have to get there. So I know it's hard and I'm not going to let that sway us.
That's helpful, thanks Greg.
One last thing, if you would, in terms, one of the last things I said when we were here last, a month ago, was at some point, I sort of reserve the right to break the glass and say it's sort of an emergency situation, we may need data entry people, I may need some help from the county, et cetera. I still am holding my breath, treading water on that. We do have a former employee who has retired now, who we've got back on some contract workforce, part-time. We're going to turn her attention to this project, so that will help. It may still be though that we, I think, the simplest way I can put this is we don't know exactly how it's going to look. I have people every day who are doing, are full-time, their time is taken up with their daily tasks trying to get ready for this. There will inevitably be glitches. In the most perfect scenario, if we had all the time in the world, there'd still be glitches. There'd still be things that need to be fixed, error messages that need to be addressed. I would like, I'm going to need somebody to be the person who shows up every day not knowing what they're going to deal with, who just deals with those error messages. She just deals with the mistakes that will inevitably take place. I'm hoping we can absorb that without coming to you for an extra FTE, but it may be that I need an emergency allocation of funds, whether that's for a contractor or for somebody permanently, I don't, I don't know. But again, in the interest of full disclosure, so you're not hit with something, you know, end of July, I wanted to at least address that. We're doing all we can to absorb it internally, but I'm hoping another month of testing will give us a better idea of what that looks like, so.
Greg, what is the reasoning that we have to go to paper for seven days?
This is their process. This is how OJA has rolled out the previous one hundred counties across Kansas. They shut the old system off, they go to paper, and they, they prepare for the go-live. I'm told that this process is their process and they, they don't have a Plan B or an alternate option. The only thing I can say is, is that we are the largest entity that will go live. We are a court of volume. The previous hundred have nothing like what we do.
But that was my, kind of my point.
This is a test of fire.
Right, is that other counties that are significantly smaller, that might be an easier thing to do than it would be for us. So I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do to shorten that time or if we need to work with them on what's more realistic for us because seven days on paper seems like that's just not really feasible for such a county.
As, as Mark and I have both said, we continue to see progress. We continue to see effort that's paying off. OJA is recognizing opportunities to change and slowly, little bit by little bit, we are steering them, but at the end of the day, we still have to meet the August 7th deadline. So they have pledged as many people as they can on their side from the different courts across Kansas to help key things in. I really am uncomfortable with that because that's manual and it enters more opportunity for error. However, I do feel that the right people are in these meetings and we're having the right discussions to solve the problems. It's just, there are a number of problems to solve that the timeframe really gives me, that's, that's where my anxiety rises. I would like to see this happen across a longer time span, but I don't have that luxury. So we'll make do with what we've got.
And then at what point after the go-live, if this just is not working, when do we say that we need to go back to what it was? Is that even a possibility?
It's not a possibility. They're going to turn it off. They've, they've assured us that all the data from full court has been migrated over into Odyssey, so that data exists in the new system. They are under some complications where the system is no longer supported. The opportunity for them to take payments through the system ends on July 31st. Their house of cards is falling as far as the old system goes. It's just not going to be available to them. It's, when they make the move to Odyssey, it's Odyssey and they don't look back.
I will keep my opinion on that to myself. Thank you.
So we just would stay paper, pretty much? Sounds like we'd stay paper if it doesn't go?
We'll do the best hybrid that we can.
Okay. All right, what else?
Greg, did you have anything from Sheriff?
Morning.
Just to give some perspective, to echo Mark's concern, so when we're dealing with a 24-hour operation, a time that the lights go out or we lose power to, you know, our communication system or our databases, work becomes difficult, but we have places and procedures in there to carry us through short periods of time. But when you're talking about this lengthy amount of time that's going to occur, that presents a ton of problems. When we did our cutover for the jail system, we planned for four months for a three-day cutover because it took them three days to migrate the data. So Commissioner Lopez, like you, I'm, I'm at, I don't know why it's going to take them seven to ten days because the data is already migrated over. So that's the part that I don't understand and so maybe they can explain that to us, but I don't know, other than to tell you it's going to make work complicated for the law enforcement profession to be able to try to verify the legitimacy of warrants and protection from abuse and protection from stalking orders during this timeframe. I'm not saying that it can't be done because we use a paper, part of a paper system for the service of our protection orders right now, and we're successful at it, but when you're trying to verify something at two in the morning and you don't have a data source anymore, that becomes a really big problem of being able to make a decision. Sometimes it's even to check the, the writing to get a good copy of it because the copy was bad or you're trying to verify who gains custody of children or who can remain in residence. And those are critical decisions that have to be made during those timeframes. And for us to just throw our hands up and walk away, that's just not an option sometimes. So they are, they are tying, tying our hands during this timeframe.
So to follow up on that, Mike, this would be a question for you. Who would be, if something were to happen during this time where we can't access this data, who's liable on, is that solely Secretary County? Is this company because of their issues going to hold some part of the liability on something that's wrong or?
Commissioner, we'll certainly look at some of the legal issues involved with this. There may be some, some tort claims, defenses that would apply to this kind of a situation. I don't know how the county itself would, or the Sheriff's Department would necessarily be liable if they didn't have the accurate information, but we'll, we'll take a look at that and can report back to you.
And as far as any requests from Sheriff's Office, I'm not aware of any at this point that we would need, but those would be subject to whatever we would have to respond to. So those could be last-minute needs that we may bring before the Commission.
Okay. Good questions. Thanks for the update. Good luck.
Chairman, we'll bring it back one more time, but I'm kind of just targeted July 11th is a Tuesday after the Fourth of July week, and we'll bring this discussion back for a last-minute update before they go live in case something changes, so.
Well, thanks for keeping us updated.
Thank you guys.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that they've done paper process before and so they, all hands on deck with a couple of departments, so just let us know. So thank you.
All right. Lindsay, do you have something?
Just a question. What was the date you said?
July 11th.
The 11th, okay. The implementation date was?
August 7th.
Oh, it's August 7th, never mind, thank you. That'd be about three weeks before that. That works, thank you. All right.
Okay.
So the next, we'll talk about elections next, and I forgot in the intro to mention that the Election Commissioner has worked with Tanya and reprogrammed the template of what she is asking for as far as facilities. So I'm going to have actually Tanya start this discussion up and just give the Commission a brief overview of what we're now seeking as far as election building and talk about some modifications and changes that the new Commissioner has made to the plan. And then we'll have Lindsay get up and talk about the budget, so.
Okay.
Morning Tanya.
Morning Chairman and Commissioners. Okay. So if you will recall, earlier this year, we had quite a bit of activity looking for an elections building. And shortly after that, we had our Commission Election, our Commission Electioner start. And so as we were looking at buildings, we wanted to make sure that the needs for our new Election Commissioner was being met for a building. So we suggested that we do some reprogramming for the elections building. So we enlisted Justin Graham, who is our on-call architect with Schaefer-Johnson-Coxen-Fry. And he is very familiar with doing programming for elections. He's done this for five years. He did it in 2016, 2017, 2019, 2021, and now 2023. And so previously, we were working off of a building that was about 30,000 square feet, split in half warehouse and office space, so about 15,000 split. And so we met with Laura and her staff to do programming, and we did that in two meetings and then he did a tour of the warehouse. And so what I have before you is a summary of that programming, and I don't want to go through each detail, but what I would like to do is hit the highlighted pieces because that's where there's been some significant change. And so for the voting room, we, Laura increased the quantity of voting stations. And so that went up from 1,900 square feet to about 2,100 square feet. And then for the election specialist and registration, there was some growth in staff and a more efficient layout in bullpen and office environment. So we went from 1,500 square feet down to about 1,000 square feet. And then down in the conference room, she wanted to add a training room, and so we went from 350 square feet to 2,000 square feet there. And then in storage and support, there was a reorganization of workflow. We had some areas shrink and other areas increased. There was an additional equipment storage, unisex staff restroom, incoming mailroom, and advanced scanning room. So we increased from 5,100 square feet to about 6,192 total. And so in total there, total elections office gross area is about 17,580 square feet. And then our warehouse is 15,200. So in total, square footage for the elections office is 32,780. Now, if we combine office and warehouse, we can reduce that by 320 square feet. And I know that that is the desire of the Secretary State as well as the Election Commissioner. So I'm going to say in total, the square footage that she needs through the reprogramming is 32,460 square feet. So I'm going to just round that to 32.5. Her current square footage is 7,890 square feet in historic courthouse, 11,000 square feet in warehouse. So 19,000 square feet total is what she's currently in. And so if we give her 32.5, her increase in space is about 71%. So again, through the reprogramming, she's getting about 32,500 square feet. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but this is what we came up with in working with Justin as well as the Election Commissioner and her staff for reprogramming.
Okay. Questions?
How many square feet was that last building you looked at over there?
On IDA?
Oh.
The one on IDA?
Yeah.
I don't know. IDA?
Boy, you're.
It had warehouse also.
I want to say it was about 30,000 square feet and maybe a little bit over. But I, I'm sorry, I do not really remember the specifics, but I can look it up and get back with you.
Looks like Andrew's looking it up. We might have some other questions. Go ahead.
Thank you Chairman. Just a refresher, our goal be, on previous Election Commissioner was about 32,000 combined space, so this really isn't, what was our, what was our goal before?
30,000 square feet.
30,000 square feet combined.
Correct.
So it's a, it's a, okay. That's not, that's not that big of a change from 30,000 to 32.5. That's, okay, that's reasonable, thank you.
Thanks for that information.
How about we looked at the things already that are, that were larger than the 30,000 mass? Can we go back and look at those again? Or can we have the discussion or we'll have to look at them again because we've seen them?
Yeah, we sure can. I don't know what the status is on some of those buildings, but we sure can look at those. I will tell you that I had a conversation with our on-call real estate broker just last week, and he said that there are more buildings popping up right now. So we certainly can go back and look and we can, we can look and see what other buildings have popped up currently, so be happy to do that. And I might just say, unless anything has changed, I mean, our goal will be to, again, go out and look at buildings now that we understand what the square footage needs are, unless there is another desire from the Commission, that's, that's what our plan would be to do.
May I ask a couple of other questions here? So in terms of other, other criteria, there has been maybe an unstated goal that it's downtown, that it's close to a highway, other things, parking type of things. What are the other criteria we're looking for in addition to 32.5? What are the other things we are looking for that would meet the needs of the, of the target building?
I think some of the things that we're looking for are parking. Parking is a big one.
How much?
Well, my understanding is 200 stalls. I know that.
For staff and voters both?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. You say downtown, but my understanding is more centrally located. And so I know that that, that has been downtown, but centrally, centrally located. I know that before, I think, when we say centrally located, I think, what do we call it? When we say rolling hills.
Yeah, I mean, the central, the geographic central location of the county is Kellogg and Tyler.
Yeah.
So, but you want to go toward a population center? Do you want to get where most of the people are? I think it's been somewhat of our requirement that we've been on a transit system so that there's there's bus capacity to get there. Past that, I think those are the high points.
Yeah, those are the, those are the major points. And I might just pass the microphone to our election commissioner also, just to make sure that she's making, you know, stating that this meets her needs as well.
It does, and on the parking, the 200, it also has to accommodate trucks for when we're loading election equipment so that those trucks can be secured in a secured area with our election equipment on it. So when we say 200 parking, yes, it is for voting, but it is also for the deployment of equipment for elections. And a major arterial, that desire to have easy access for transit, public transit for voters.
Thanks. Other, other questions?
And also answering your question, I don't know which one of you asked about the building.
Square feet?
Andrew brought it up. It was right at 30,000.
Okay. And that was combined?
Combined, yeah.
Wow, okay. That gives us an idea of what it looks like. Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Tanya. Appreciate the work that, that went in and Commissioner on defining exactly what you needed. That was good, good for you and us.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Next up is Lindsay and for...
That'd be me. And Laura.
Or Laura.
And Christian, and they're here to supplement. Say what? Okay, am I all right to start? Chairman, am I okay to start?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry.
Good morning and thank you.
Good morning. So as you know, we are closing in on the deadline for recommended budget decisions. Next Thursday is Tom's decision deadline for what will be included in his manager's recommended budget, which will then be presented to you at a special meeting on July 11th. And then you'll have about a six-week gap between when that recommended is published. Now, for you all to make considerations to make any changes to that budget, we typically on, on things that we know there's going to be a lot of discussion on, we try and get to you a little ahead of time. So that's what we're doing with this elections ask. As you know, there are a lot of decision packages that were submitted, and so we have worked to understand what those asks are to try and then also get some direction from you, at least on two options that we've identified. Hopefully, one of those options resonates with you. If not, if there's other direction you want us to take, that's what we want to talk through. So there are some specifics that are not going to be worked out, and we will not yet have for a conversation here, but in general, we would just want to go through option one and option two and get your feedback, hopefully in advance of Tom's decision deadline. So what you'll see at the top are option one and option two. If it looks like it's a merged cell where it cuts across option one and option two, it's true for both options. So we know that there is a need for staff in the elections office. We are trying to work through what that would look like and how many of those seven requested FTEs would be funded in this upcoming budget. We know that there will be some. We don't know what that looks like yet. We know that there are additional costs that are always necessary in a presidential election year. We have a base budget for elections. Historically, those dollars have been adjusted depending on whether, excuse me, it's a presidential or gubernatorial election. Obviously, presidential elections tend to be our most expensive, so there are dollars requested for that. We also know that at the time, the commission was hearing the requests from the election office. The state had not yet put out the rules for presidential preference primary. That information has now come out. We now have some new dollar estimates that are included in this that are, are more than what we had originally talked through but are absolutely necessary in order to ensure the elections office has that ability. So all of that is wrapped into the presidential, presidential election costs. You will see that when we get closer to the decision deadline. But where we need your feedback is the idea and the concept of what is mailed out in advance of an election and then how many additional polling sites are added. So that's where option one and option two diverge. And I know that Christian has done a lot of number crunching, so we will let him jump in on any details after we kind of walk through this summary so that you can have some additional information on that. If you all allow the flyer that has been done in the past, not last year, but basically it sends essentially an application that folks can complete and send back to the election office with, and Christian has the data on what that, or what that results in in terms of fewer people at the polls, so less lines, less time standing in line. So if we do that, the proposal would be to only add 15 of the 30 requested new polling sites with the idea that fewer people would be showing up the day of election day to vote. Or the commission last year authorized a postcard that basically said, here are your different ways to vote, just as a general reminder of where to go. If we did that, then the idea would be to add the 30 polling sites that are requested in order to reduce the amount of folks showing up at some of the busier election sites. There also is a request to add poll pads. That would be something that we would want to work through with the elections office to determine how many of those would be necessary, particularly for any new posts or polling sites. There also was a request for a DS 450 machine, which is really more of a redundancy request, and so the suggestion would be in lieu of purchasing one of those, leasing it for the day of, just so that there is, obviously, it improves efficiency if there's two, but if the one that we own actually goes down, there's an opportunity to have that machine onsite. There were also requests for watermark ballots. There's still some question about how that's going to look and what those costs are going to be. Same thing with overtime, particularly if staff are added, full-time staff are added. And so the recommendation would be in either option one or option two to access the operating reserve in next year's budget based on how those numbers actually play out. So we also had talked about doing battery replacement in machines. We would want to go ahead and do that in 2023. And then poll prints, that was another request that was submitted. Those can be done in even years, and so since next year is an even, or I'm sorry, those can only be done in odd years. They can't be done in even years. So since next year is an even year, we would want to consider that for the 2025 budget process. So that is what's summarized at the top on this handout that you have. You can see the asks down below. Again, we're not actually sharing with you what is in the recommended because we are looking for your feedback on what you would like to see in the recommended. And if Christian can maybe talk through some of the details on what the, the science and the math shows on what we're trying to get to, and then I think I would really appreciate any feedback or comments or questions that we can get back to you on in the next week or so to help you make your decision. Christian, can I turn it over to you?
Of course.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners.
Hi, Christian.
Management team. Christian Lamuel, Operations Manager for the Election Office. So I wanted to kind of gauge what would happen with these different packages we, if you were to choose a different one. If we implement the advanced by mail flyer, I estimated that election day turnout could see a decrease of around 18% election day voters. For reference, that would be around 14.8, 14,800 election day voters. As a lot of that would shift to mail, it would be a 76% increase in the advanced by mail voters. That could be around, for an even-year general election, about 56,000 advanced by mail voters. But then if we were to add the addition of 15 sites without the flyer, what that would do is it'll reduce the election day turnout at those sites that it's split, but not overall election day turnout. That would be true with the 30 sites as well. You're just splitting election day turnout for the sites that you pull and move to the new locations, but it's a combination of both the flyer and the new sites in which you see the greatest impact on election day turnout. For reference, if you had 15 sites and a flyer, you'll see an average difference per site of 300 less election day voters. If you had the flyer and the 30 sites, it's around 400 less voters per site. So it's a combination of both the flyer and the sites. If you truly want to reduce lines on election day, get the best of both worlds.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, I might have missed this, sorry. The 30 additional polling sites for all 30, that's $37,095 estimate? Is that correct?
That's correct.
For all 30? Okay. And I can assume 15 is half of that?
That would be an appropriate assumption, yes.
Just making sure my assumptions.
I think the challenge that, that we have been trying to talk through with the elections office is, what does that mean for, do we need additional staff? Does that mean going out and recruiting additional people? Does that mean any of the new poll pads, things like that too, in addition to, to maybe just the bare bones costs? What does that mean in terms of actual operations as well?
With 15 sites, I think you're able to pull some of the machines and staff away from existing sites. You wouldn't necessarily have to go out and recruit more poll workers or purchase new machines. You can repurpose those larger sites, send those voters and equipment to the new sites.
Do we, do we have any data reflecting the average wait time in Sedgewick County?
I don't believe we currently have.
Do we have a wait time problem in Sedgewick County?
Yes, certainly.
But we just can't quantify it?
I don't think it's ever been recorded.
Okay.
We, we tried to do that several years ago. We tried to recruit staff to literally go stand and watch how long it took for somebody to get in a door and get through, and we couldn't...
Let me ask, do we have like a national standard of what an appropriate wait time is supposed to be?
I'm not aware of a standard for that.
I mean, I don't know if waiting an hour is acceptable. Is two hours acceptable? Is 30 minutes acceptable? I don't know if, what are we aiming at? I'm not sure what we're aiming at, so. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks, Christian. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we do the new polling sites, are they going, I'm assuming they're to target areas that have the longer wait, so are we looking to put those in those same areas, or how are you looking at placement for those sites?
We want to split the lar... We want to certainly split the largest polling sites that are over 5,000 initially. Really, we want to split them all that are over 4,000, but are, we have two that are over 7,000. So we want to take the largest sites first and split those to get the voter counts down.
And Christian, you mentioned that if we did the 15 new polling sites, then we should have enough staff and some of those overhead costs won't be, won't be there, but if we go with the 30, well, then we need, will that change that? Will we have to add new?
In our additional, in our additional ask with the 30, some poll worker pay was baked into that price in there as well, based on the new addition of sites.
And then can you just remind us again what the difference is between the mail postcard and the mail flyer with application?
Yeah, so the note card was a note card sent to the individuals that had, here's the place you can vote for early voting, but the advanced by mail flyer had that application for advanced by mail voting.
And then on this breakdown of how much that cost, it says it's 115,000. Is that the same for both, or what's the cost difference?
It's close, I believe, for the postcard. Last year, we sent that postcard out. Printing was around 40,000. Postage, we don't have that because the print shop covered postage expenditures, but that's usually often double times printing costs. So it would be a little cheaper than that, maybe around 90,000, but it's still a large expenditure for a postcard.
So it would be cheaper to do the flyer at 15 additional post sites than it would be to do the postcard and 30?
In the 30 sites, I believe so.
And I also want to add a comment on that postcard that was sent last year. There was also a link, information to contact Sedgwick County Election Office to receive an advanced by mail ballot. That overwhelmed the call center and our office because callers called that number and receive an advanced by mail ballot. So that's another drawback. I mean, it's a great postcard, but that was one of the problems we had to deal with last year on those postcards.
And how many polling sites are there now?
82.
Okay.
Or 84. I think we added a couple.
In our discussion, I just, I think Commissioner Dennis helped point out that, so schools or, you don't have any problem finding 30 or 15 polling sites?
No, in fact, we're working with USD 259. We've met with Terry Moses, and we are probably going to be adding the four high schools for next year.
Okay.
We've already done the ADA studies.
ADA and security.
The really nice thing about that is we can use their gyms, and they have, the problem with schools is the security they now have in place. So with using a gym, they have an exterior door so that voters do not have to go through the school security system.
Okay. Interesting. Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
No, thank you, Chairman. I appreciate it. The flyer with the application on it, do we pay postage both ways or just send it out to the, to the people that want to apply then pay the postage coming back, or do we?
I believe we pay return postage as well. Is that correct, Rick? We got it?
We do not.
Not the return postage?
Okay, just the mail postage. Okay. Good question.
So we, we pay it both ways?
No.
No.
And print shop pays maybe postage expenditures rather than our budget.
Okay. And if we're trying to reduce certain polling places, would it be cost effective to just target the polling places that you're trying to reduce that, the number of people coming in on, or do you send it out to this application countywide where that you're not having problems?
I think you would have to send it out countywide because...
What reason?
Well, other voters will say, well, why didn't I get an advanced by mail ballot? How is that fair? So you have to look at all voters. If you send it to one, you need to send it to all.
What are the two, do you have the two polling sites that are running over 7,000 votes? Do you know which ones those are?
I do. Reliance Church and the Machinist Union.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are our two largest sites, both over 7,000.
And then you have, how many are over 5,000?
Those numbers, Christian?
About, how many spots?
I just have the currently over 4,000. We're at 47 sites over 4,000 with our current level.
Okay.
Addition of 15 would have 32 sites over that critical level. Addition of 30 sites would have 17 at that critical level.
So as of, you got 82 sites now and 47 of them are over 4,000?
Correct.
Around 58-ish percent.
Right. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't know if this statute applies to the application or not. Maybe, maybe it does not, but KSA 254-33 does mandate that if someone returns a mail ballot without postage that is still delivered, any election materials are, election materials are delivered by the post office, and if that happens without postage, then that postage is billed to the county.
Correct.
So that does not include the, anything that happens prior to the ballot? If they return a ballot application, that does not, that does not cover the application for a ballot? That statute?
It does. If we, if we get a ballot back that has no postage, we accept it.
What I'm asking is the ballot application, if it's returned, if it's mailed without a stamp, the ballot application, will it be also, would it be following the same statute? Is it also delivered without postage and we get billed for that postage?
That's correct. Any mail that's sent to the post, by the post office to the election office without a stamp, they will still deliver and they can bill us. They don't always.
So what I'm saying is, again, so to the question is, we leave a spot on there for the voter to put a stamp, but if they don't do that, election materials by law are, are delivered by the post office to the election office.
Correct.
And we get billed for the postage that's not been applied by the voter. So everything is delivered regardless whether it's posted, paid by the voter or not, they still get it delivered to the post, to the election office, excuse me.
Correct.
I think that's a better answer. So we have to understand, we, we potentially do pay for postage both ways, right? We have to understand that. Okay.
And then can you, following up to his question, can you say what, what percentage are not stamped?
Very few.
Very few?
Because people don't know. They put, they put stamps on there, and they end up paying for it, but people don't know.
Be specifically put a place on the flyer that says, put a stamp here.
Okay.
Generally, we don't offer that as an option for the public to just put all of the expense on us.
Okay. So, yeah, it's, you know, they do the stamps because they just don't know, but when we know, and the answer to the question is, it's not required, it's just, we like them, we like them to pay for that. On the postcard, compared to the advanced mail ballot application, that application On the postcard, compared to the advanced mail ballot application, that application is unique to the voter. It's pre-printed with their name, their voter ID, all thing, everything on there except for their driver's license number and their signature. Correct? So it's unique to that voter. The postcard is generic and it's not, it's not unique. The postcard is not inside of an envelope. It's a postcard that's printed on both sides. One side is their address and information. Other side is details we want them to know about the election cycle. So is there a QR code on that postcard for them to stamp out that QR code and go and fill out the details to request a mail ballot?
I would have to look at it, but I believe it had something that would direct them for more information.
I think a QR code that takes them to the mail ballot application would help. Because a lot of people, and especially in today's generation, taking a picture of a QR code that takes them to the right spot on the web to complete the mail ballot application process would be very easy to do.
They do, would also have to print it out and send it to us. There's no way, the state and our office does not have any way to fill it out and sign it and send it to us all online without printing.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go take a look at that because I understand that there's an affidavit that you can, I don't, let me go refresh my memory on some of the details on that. But I would just say this, for the, for the, for the envelope with the detailed information about each voter, to be a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and yet the postcard is ninety thousand dollars, that doesn't sound right to me.
This is the printing cost. It doesn't include the postage because this is what comes through there.
So the one fifteen is not including postage?
Correct.
So the one fifteen for the flyer, we did bake postage into there based on previous expenditures of flyers in the past. Is one fifteen?
Need an apples, apples comparison, guys. So include postage on both or on neither, but let's understand what we're talking about.
Yeah, but we'll, yeah, let's, let's follow up on that.
I would view the application as a very complicated mailing because it's unique to each individual voter. It takes a computer to print each one independently, whereas a postcard, they're just running these things off of a, you know, off of a, for example, I send out postcards in my, in my campaign issues. My, I can send out postcards for about thirty-three cents a piece. That's including everything. That's the paper, the printing, the postage, all of it is thirty-three cents a piece. I got a postcard in the mail last week for the election office. It was forty-four cents postage on the postcard. I don't know why.
So the postcard that we send out with the early voting information, it is not postcard size. So it is eight and a half by eleven. So it doesn't qualify for, for postcard postage, but it's getting less than postcard postage. It's getting standard mail rate. So twenty-six cents or, or less. It also has variable data on it. On the front side, it also had specific to the voter, election day, polling place, address and location. So while the back was static, the front, in addition to having variable data for the address, you know, the delivery address, it had election day, polling place, specific to that person.
So the postcard includes, well, you can call it a postcard, but it's really a larger piece of mail. So that has information about early voting as well as how to, how to get a mail ballot application. Mail ballot application does not include the early voting information. It does?
At the direction of the county commission several years ago, it was changed from only having advanced mail ballot application to all ways to vote. So it has early voting, election day, and an application for ballot by mail.
Okay. I, I.
It's a, it's a large folded self-mailer. It's not in an envelope.
I'm still struggling with these numbers. These numbers don't make sense to me in terms of the cost. But regardless, I do agree with that these larger sites, if they have room in part, if there's room inside there to handle, you said seven thousand voters. I don't know what that is. But if it's a very large site with a lot of equipment and a lot of parking, that may not necessarily be a terrible situation. The assumption is, is that there's not enough space for the equipment and for the parking. And so you have seven thousand people assigned to a site that can't handle that number of people. That becomes the problem. So you have to have, you know, the right number of people, the right number of equipment, the right number of parking to handle the number of people assigned to that poll site based on their, you know, we also have some historic data on voter turnout at each poll site. So we know where, you know, if this is set up correctly or not. I have always been an advocate for more poll, more, more poll sites. But that's, that's distributing the people and the equipment to more sites, not necessarily, not necessarily adding more equipment or adding more people. I think it's just, it becomes more convenient to people to have places that are closer to where they live, that they can vote at those places. That's, that's my, my opinion. That's the, the reason for most, more sites is an issue of convenience. With, in terms of the, the wait, I have been saying for years, I'll say it again, since this topic has been risen, I, I think for us to capture that data at every poll site by the supervising judge or someone who's assigning that site to, to capture that data. And the way you would do it, I would say, is to fill out a card with a time on it and hand it to the last person in the line. When they get to the front of the line, they hand it into the poll, the people at the poll pads. And that becomes, they write down the time that was received. You can do that numerous times during the day to, to, to gather data on how long that line is in terms of the wait before the poll pad. I don't know if we want to capture waiting times between the poll pad and the, and the express voting machines. That might be another line. I don't know if that, if that line needs to be captured as well. But to capture this data is not, is not technically complicated. It's easy. We just need to get the data. But this issue of assumptions that we have long waits is driving a very expensive proposal here. I think that the, the wait times at certain locations is, is unreasonable. On many locations, it's fine. We're not hearing, we're not hearing from them. We're only hearing from the ones that are very, very long. And there may be some solutions at those particular locations because maybe there's, there's, there's space limited and they can't add any more, any more equipment. Those need to be split up, obviously. But if we have a lot, enough space and we just haven't deployed enough people or equipment or people didn't show up to the, to election day, because I know that did happen, then, then there may be a reason why that line was long. So we have to understand that. It's not like it's long everywhere in every location. That's just not true. Most people in Sedgwick County are, are getting in there and voting in, in and out in a matter of minutes. That's the norm. There are very few people having these long lines. The long line we had on Monday before the twenty, twenty, it was a twenty, I think it was twenty twenty general, I suppose, twenty twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty-two general election, the Monday morning, we didn't, we didn't have enough equipment deployed in the election office and they deployed more to deal with that problem. But we had a two-hour line going around the building. That was unreasonable and we should have, we should have deployed more, more equipment in that site. And by the way, historically, we've always had more equipment in that site, but we didn't, we didn't deploy it that time, so we have long lines. But there's a reason behind what happened. We have to understand that. So I, I don't, I'm not convinced that this is a broken system. I think there's places we need to fix it. And I'm an advocate for more sites, but I'm not so sure that we understand the problem to, to, to address it the way we are addressing it today.
I agree. It's not a broken system, but there's areas that we can improve, absolutely. And as far as the data, being a former election judge, I guess if I had a two-hour wait at my polling site, I would be very concerned. But at that point, I am not focused on taking a card to the last person in the line and timing to how long it, I'm focused on my polling site and making sure it's running effectively and securely. Efficiently is another question. So I agree, there's, there's certain polling sites that can be improved and we're going to work on doing just that.
Me personally, I've gone to some advanced sites. I've also done election day voting. I've only voted by mail one time to get the experience. The only time I remember standing in line for two hours was the two thousand and eight, two thousand and eight presidential election. That was the only time I remember ever standing in line for two hours. Every time I've ever gone and voted since, and it's been twenty minutes, thirty minutes, it's never been unreasonable. So I, I, I agree. If there's a two-hour wait, you've got problems there. I think, I think people in that situation, they know they have problems and we need to solve the problem, especially when it's happening, if not before.
But I can tell you, Reliance Church is one of those polling sites that has over seven thousand voters because their voters came over to my polling site last year and voted provisionally just to vote on the amendment. So that is one I want to focus on splitting and we're working on. So I don't know what happened at them. I don't know about the wait times at the Machinist Union. We can, I can certainly talk to the SJs that have worked that site, but I agree, we need to be targeted and deliberate on which ones we split.
Just for the record, I've also been a supervising judge for many election sites. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So the other questions we, it's kind of, I, maybe it'll be helpful for us, Laura, why don't you tell us what you, what you've learned now and the three of you, why don't you tell us what your preference is? Some of this stuff is statutorily obligated, so we don't even need to, I don't think we need to discuss that much, but it's the options.
The options?
What do you think?
Well, so I met with Lindsay and Christian and I and county manager, and I really, really like option one. I think it is a good compromise and it blends what we need, going with fifteen new sites and doing the advanced by mail application. Christian has the data where those, that application has significantly reduces the amount of voters on election day. So I really like that. You're right, statutorily, we're going to have to deal with the watermark. We're going to have to deal with the presidential year. The DS four fifty lease that she proposed, we look at, we have contacted the vendor and we're waiting to hear back if that's an option to lease just the DS four fifty on election day. It would be good to have it throughout the, as a backup tabulator during advanced voting too and early voting, advanced by mail voting. So those are my, that's my intake. I mean, I, input. I think option one with doing the advanced by mail application and adding fifteen new sites is very, a good option for our voters. I think you would agree, right?
Well, the flexibility of, of flyers and postcards, we've kind of, my experience recently is we've been able to, each year, decide, determine if we want to do that or not out of respect for you, Laura, and your, your new, and this work you've done. I probably lean personally to support, support your option one.
It's gonna be a presidential year.
And knowing that, knowing that the next year, you know, if we find differently, then, then we adjust.
Yeah.
But that's just me. So if you all want to weigh in and have an opinion, one way or another.
Mr. Chairman, just one little question. I have a watermark issue. What year is that being implemented?
Next year, January first.
Of twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty, sorry, twenty-four. So the presidential election cycle. I forget what year this is. And the watermark must be pre-printed on the paper. We're not printing the watermark. It's already part of the paper when we get the paper, correct?
We don't have an answer on that yet.
And is it for both the express vote as well as the, I call the word traditional paper ballots? It's on both types of ballots?
Yes.
Okay. And by the way, one other question for, for Christian here, but that, the estimate of eighteen percent decrease, can you please provide that, the logic behind that, that calculation? I don't have to have it right now, but I'd like to get that sometime.
Well, and Christian did a ton of math and he sent it to Tom and I this morning. So do you mind if we forward that on to all commissioners?
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Sir?
I would agree with option one. I think it's cheaper of the options and it's a good compromise to get, to lower the number of people going out to vote within, to also lower the number at each height as well. So I would agree with that as well. Thank you.
When those mailed applications come back, what's the, how do you verify, what's the process on verifying that that signature matches what's on record? Is it manual?
The signature on the application is compared to signatures that we have on file for any previous document that we received from that voter. And the Secretary of State's office provides specific training for election staff in order to know how to do that, how to compare those signatures.
And of the other four big counties, who does this? Who does this mail flyer with application? Do you know which ones?
I think if I recall, all three, and I would have to verify and get that information back, but on, in a presidential year, I believe all three plan to do an advanced by mail. But I can, let me reach out to the other three commissioners.
Okay.
See what their plan is for next year.
Didn't mean to interrupt. Um, dude? Christian, did you put this document together?
That was Lindsay did.
Well, it's hard to follow.
I know. In all honesty, I didn't plan to hand it out, but then Tanya had a handout, so then I went and printed more. So, sorry. I was just gonna talk.
So it's difficult for me to, because we've got Xs down under things and I don't know what those Xs mean.
Sure. It means it's in that option or not in that option, or if there's words, it means I'm modifying it for that option.
I just don't know what the difference in cost between option one and option two is. I need something simple.
Well, we need to revise, or maybe not revise, confirm the estimates for the postcard and the flyer. So when we have that, I can take this and I can, I can make it pretty and readable and get that to you.
All right. Well, truly, and I'm not trying to criticize.
Nope. It's fair.
It's difficult to read.
Yes.
I don't know what the cost is in each option, so I just need it broken down. Tell me what each option's gonna cost.
Got it.
Thank you.
Can we also add, going from fifteen to thirty poll sites, the overhead cost of that would add on to it as well?
Yes, we can do multiple scenarios. Sure. Easy enough. Sorry.
I, I, I just don't know if, I, I don't feel like I have enough information.
Okay.
On, on costing. I mean, we're, we're looking at here, the election commissioner has given us her recommendation. And if our duty here is to, is on the budgetary side of this, the fiscal side of this, I just want to make sure I have, what's the difference between option one and two when it comes to this? The two-point-three, I can do, I can deduce some math here, but I just want to make sure that I have this information. She's given us her recommendation, so I came to follow her recommendation.
If the only, if this makes it very easy, if it's purely fiscal, I think we, that gives us a lot of help on how to build a budget. If there's philosophical discussions about mailers or poll sites, that's more of what we're hearing. But if it's, if I'm hearing it's simply fiscal, that helps us a lot.
Yeah. In my, I'm sorry, Commissioner, but in my purview, it is fiscal. I, I'm gonna lend towards our election commissioner who is appointed to do this job. So I, I mean, I, I do have some questions on the difference between the postcard and the application. I don't remember any of these things. I know this has been a big topic around here for a while and I don't remember the difference between the two. So I, I would, a quick clarity of what those two, the difference is, and the exact difference in cost was confusing to me too.
Well, and I wonder, Christian or Rick, could you guys maybe pull last year's postcard and then maybe the prior year's application? And I, we can forward that along with the information you put together and we can get that to all five commissioners so they can see.
So the postcard, which it's really not postcard size, but it had voting day information, your early voting information, it had, and if you want an advanced by mail flyer, please contact the Sedgwick County Election Office. And that's where we got overwhelmed with phone calls, both in our office and the call center. Advanced by mail application is a true application that you send back the form, you send back the form, we send you an advanced by mail ballot.
Okay. Okay. And to answer the manager's question about philosophical or budget, yeah, the budget's
And to answer the manager's question about philosophical or budget, yeah, the budget's going to drive a big portion of it. But if there is a big gap between these two, then we're going to have to look at some philosophical ideas, too. So they're going to be combined at some point, once we get some numbers. But right now, I can't tell you what the numbers are. I apologize.
There's one other thing I would, I understand we have a pretty good mail balloting system in Kansas. I'm not, I don't know how it gets much better than it is. I can think of a couple of things we could do, but that's for the legislature to debate. But let me just make one point personally, that when I walk into an election poll site, whether it's early voting or on election day, and I hand them my photo ID, someone is checking to make sure I look like the person in the photo. That's part of the check. Even though I have the driver's license number when you vote by mail, there is no one checking a photo ID. And there is a difference in security between a poll site voting and mail balloting. There is a, there's a little bit less security on mail ballots because of that. So I personally do not like the idea that we are promoting mail balloting as being equivalent as good as poll site voting. There is a difference in security, and it does matter to me. So I'm just going to state, I don't think it's as good as. And let me say, if we really wanted to do what some people want, we would have a 100% mail ballot election, and I have no poll sites at all. We might actually save money doing that. But philosophically, I don't agree with that. So the whole point of this is, we want to have a safe and secure election. We use mail balloting. We offer that. I think we should accommodate voters, give them different ways to vote, and certainly accommodate their choices on how they wish to vote, if they want to vote at all. But the idea that we're promoting a certain type of voting over another type of voting, simply to avoid election day pressure, I find that very troubling. And I don't know that I want to embrace and fund, if you will, strategies to remove pressures on election day, because I don't think it's as good as election day, as good as poll site voting. Thank you.
Okay. Sarah?
Thank you. I just, because I know elections, people are very, it's a hot topic right on, if it's secure or not. So just to say something to Commissioner Howell's point, we all look at the signatures at the end of the election. We, as the canvassers, double-check signatures. So if we have an issue with the signature, we can bring it up at that time. So it's not like there's no security on mail ballots. And at the end of the day, we are the canvasser, so we can make the decision if we disagree with the signature being the same or not. So I just wanted to make sure that that's stated, as I'm sure there are people that are watching this. So thank you.
I have a question for Mike Papoun. Wasn't there a recent case, I'm not sure if it's state or outside of Kansas, but wasn't there a recent case where signature verification became a reason to reject ballots? And I think the courts opined that that could not be a reason for rejecting ballots, based on a belief that the signature did not match historical records?
Yeah, I recollect that, Commissioner. I don't know, I could have to look at it again. I don't know if scavenging, it was on my right shoulder.
The Pennsylvania Supreme Court did that.
No, we're going to come to the microphone, because people want to hear.
The Pennsylvania Supreme Court did that in the 2020 election, and the Supreme Court denied cert on that. So that was what they allowed at that time, whether it was in conformity with statute.
So where are we right now, in terms of Kansas? We can reject ballots if we believe that the signatures don't match?
No, we don't give any credence to what Supreme Court Pennsylvania did. Their statutes are different than ours.
So we can, in fact, reject ballots if we don't believe the signatures match in Kansas?
Yes.
Okay. And then I'll just say this, as a, you know, I've been here, I'm in my ninth year, I've done a lot of canvassing. I've been here a little bit longer with some of my colleagues. We are extremely gracious on signatures. We are extremely gracious. Although I do think it is a way to verify that the voter, in fact, did touch that ballot. A lot of people have awareness of what their loved ones' signatures might look like. So some of those signatures might get through the system without actually being scrutinized. So do I think it's as good as photo ID in a poll site? I'll still maintain, I don't think it's as good. Okay? I think signature verification is something, but it's not the same as a photo ID in a poll site, a person actually, you know, having eyewitness of that voter coming to vote. It's a much different system. So I'll just continue to say, if others feel great, if others feel great about the current system, that's wonderful. I don't personally feel like it's as good as. All right, thank you.
Any other comments? So a little financial information and some other data points, and got enough to move on? Okay. We have other electeds that are in the audience. Is there any other, any comments or questions? Yeah. Randy, welcome to the meeting.
Good morning. I just wanted to give you guys a few updates of what's going on in the Treasurer's Office. First, two weeks ago, we went to the city of Park City, and I mentioned before, I think when we had some one-on-one meetings with you, that I wanted to do a pilot program of doing tax and tag work in a city hall, and Park City approved that. So starting July 12th, that will be my first site. We're working with IT to get all the technology we need. So we're not touching Park City's infrastructure at all. We're not, it's pretty much Sedgwick County on its own, and Park City doesn't have to help us do anything. So that's in the works. And like I said, July 12th will be the, hopefully the go-live date with that. It'll be appointment only. Park City was worried about people walking in and them having long lines and lots of people in their lobby, but this is going to be strictly appointment only. We'll be open from 8:00 to 4:00 in those offices, and we're going to start it doing two weeks out of the month. So it'll be the second and third Wednesday of each month in Park City City Hall. And the hope is, by the end of the year, that I will have a location secured and established in the Derby area. So that's in the works. And then hopefully, then next year, a few more locations in some other cities. So this is my pilot, and hopefully, it'll work. Second, legislation did pass to email tax statements out. So we are working with our current mailing vendor to see how that could work. They do have an option that they can collect email addresses, but we're out for RFP, we're fixing to go out for RFP for new mail services. So that's kind of on a hold pattern. Hopefully, we will have something in place. So when first half tax statements go out, we'll have a way to start collecting emails. And then hopefully, we can progress from there. And then third, I'm working with the State Treasurer's Office on unclaimed property. So in the tag offices, you will see little flyers on each of the stations where they can scan a QR code to go out to the state. Sedgwick County has over $50 million in unclaimed property setting up the state of Kansas. So I'm working with them, so we can get people right there in their face to click and do that. And with that, I thought, well, you know, Sedgwick County, we have a lot of still-dated checks. We send thousands of checks to the state of Kansas each year. So I'm working to somehow get something put together, so that way, next to the state of Kansas site, they can click a QR code for Sedgwick County of what is unclaimed in Sedgwick County, so we can try to get that money back to the residents before it does go back to the state of Kansas. So just a few updates of what I have going on in the office.
Well, that's really good. Thanks for the update. Any other questions for Randy?
Nope.
Thanks, Randy. Appreciate it. Any other electeds? Okay. Anything else before the board?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to present an idea. This might take just a couple of minutes. I don't think, I don't expect any buy-in today. May I present this, Mr. Chairman, just for a couple of minutes?
This is like an off-agenda item here.
Yeah, it is. Well, again, this is a staff meeting. This is what, at the time, we traditionally have, we're up today to present ideas that we're working on, things we want to talk about as a board. And it may not be on the agenda. So this is my one and only chance to present an idea.
Okay. Is the impacted staff aware of what we're all going to learn about?
A few of them are.
Okay. Well, this is, it's a little bit awkward, but you can, once you condense it, and we'll all say, okay, let's look into it.
All right. Well, again, so I have been working on a number of things, but I noticed our org chart, it doesn't necessarily represent accurately what I believe is the proper configuration of some of our relationships and agencies between commissioners and parts of our county administration. So I wanted to present, if you will, an idea that we need to adjust our org charts to reflect, I think, reality. And this deals specifically with the fire board. Right now, and I have a few of these I can hand out, I don't have one for everybody in the room, but I have talked to Doug Williams about this. I have talked to a couple of other staff here. There are, I believe, five direct reports to the BOCC. One of those is Chief Doug Williams for the Fire District. So in other words, he is a direct, we have a contract with Doug, that he works for the border county commissioners directly. The other four is Mike Papoun, our county councillor, county coroner, county OMD, Dr. Brinker, county appraisal Mark Clark. And those are the, I believe, the five direct reports to the county commissioners. Oh, and Lynn. Lynn Packer. You're on my list here. So make that six. Thank you, Lynn. I knew that was on, I was missing something. But anyway, as it's reflected on the org chart, it doesn't really show the connection for those five positions in the BOCC. And if you look at the Fire District org chart, it does not really show the connection between the Fire Chief and the BOCC as the governing board of the Fire District. So I'd like to recommend we adjust our org charts. There's a, I have some suggestions on how we might do that. These are not gospel. I mean, anybody can maybe do a better job than I did. But this is a suggestion. And I think that the reason it's important is I think that Chief Williams needs to understand that he truly does have an abbreviated org chart, if you will. Doug Williams, our chief, needs to have a better relationship with the BOCC directly. I'd like to invite him to provide his opinions on matters of the Fire District directly. And I think right now, he feels, I'm going to put words in his mouth, I think he feels like he's way down on the org chart. I don't think that's accurate. So I'd like to just reflect that by adjusting the pictorial, if you will, of the org chart. This is, what this shows is it shows the citizens of Sedgwick County that are the authority of the BOCC, who is the governing body of the Fire District, number one. Then below that is, of course, our selected Fire Chief, Doug Williams. He has a direct report to the BOCC. Then on either side of that, I show that the Fire District Steering Council has a connection back to either the Fire Board or the Fire Chief. And then there is a resolution, we've not talked about it for a year now, but I have a resolution I'd like to dust off. I don't think it's worthy of any serious discussion right now, but I do expect the Fire District Steering Council to give this some serious thought. That's the idea of the separation of the administration services. I do believe there are savings for the Fire District for them to go down that path. And when that day happens, it'll be very clear that the contracted administration services that the Fire District pays for, that in fact, the chief and the steering council have authority, if you will, over those services and how they're rendered. So I'd like to just, I'll hand these up to my colleagues, if that's acceptable, and one to the manager. I'm not expecting any dialogue right now. I just wanted to present this. I think this is important. And I'd like to see us consider updating this, just for clarity on exactly how these relationships are designed to be within the org chart. Mr. Manager, do you have any questions for me right now?
No, it's a, no, I'd like to look at what you're presenting and have a chance to talk to Rusty and Doug about it. This came up, the relationship between the Fire Chief and the Commission came up 2015, 2016, where it's clear in state law that the higher fire capacity rests with the Commission on the Fire Chief. It gets murky with day-to-day operations, which is where the Public Safety Director role comes in, of handling the myriad of issues that come up in the Fire District, personnel matters, compensation, when we're going back and forth, that flow through Rusty, basically. That's where it gets challenging. To me, it's, and I can't remember, I don't have the org chart in front of me, but to me, that's the classic dotted line on the org chart, where you have a report that, as a citizen, I can look at that, say, well, there's some relationship between the Fire Chief and the Commission. And yet, in an org chart, it's under the Public Safety Director for day-to-day operations. So that's the relationship as it exists today. If the Commission wants to change that relationship, the board can direct us otherwise. But that's kind of how we've worked historically since 2016 that I can recall. Mike, I don't know if you have any other memory of that, or Lindsey, or Rusty, if...
I would just say, the county's official org chart actually delineates those that are direct reports to the Commission. Fire is not one of those currently, because it falls under the Public Safety Division. So that would probably be whoever in Communications works on that, that's an easy fix pictorially on the county's org chart to demonstrate that the Fire Chief is hired by you, and that you're the direct report. However you wish to manage that, whether one of you wants to take on the administrative, or whether you want the administrative to flow through me, but you want the org chart to demonstrate that he's direct report to you. And then Doug is not contracted either. Doug is one that is managed as a county employee with a pay scale and not a contract. Just make sure that you're clear of that.
And I do see the other boxes on the county org chart. I probably should have been, again, this is the first attempt to add some clarity, but it's not very well done. I have to admit that. But I don't know that it completely shows those relationships between the BOCC and those five specific positions, but I do think it's a little confusing on the Fire District, because it shows the Fire District way down on this chart. And let me just say upfront, this is not to be negative response towards Rusty Leves, or Manager Stoltz, or Sheena, or anybody. I just think that I would like to invite our Fire Chief to be a little bit more, I guess, find himself a little higher on the org chart, so he feels welcome to bring his ideas and needs and concerns and problems forward to the BOCC directly. I think that's important. And again, I think that as he needs manager support or public safety support, certainly you guys are available to receive those needs as well. But I just like the BOCC to have that direct connection to the Fire Chief. I think it does matter in how we relate to each other. So I'm just trying to make that clearer on the org chart, and I think that's important for the BOCC, as well as for the Fire District, for us to have that clear understanding. And right now, I think it's not very clear. So I'd like to make that recommendation for that change pictorially, if nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Thanks for this information to digest. So, okay. Anything else? Tom, yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else before the staff meeting? Lynn, welcome back. Okay. All right. Okay. See everybody tomorrow. Okay, we're adjourned.